We're here, planning board, Newcastle, on the evening of October 7th. Date of some note on Infineon. And we have a couple of items on the agenda. Our first one is a continued public hearing. This is for the Newcastle Fire District, number one, 491 King Street. This is an application for a site development and plan amendment for a modification of previously approved site lighting.
Good evening, everyone. Lynn Wining with Windows Marks here on behalf of the applicant, Joe Mottafary. You've seen us before, you've seen us too much. So, um...
Not for all of us.
So, we believe that we've uncovered every stone and looked into all of the questions, you know, very, very good questions. We have a plan tonight that is dark sky compliant, that has no light spillage onto residential property. Joe will explain just slight light spillage onto the Con Ed and the car wash property. And takes into account the residential neighbors' concerns as well. And as I've said before, and I just want to reiterate, we also have to seriously consider the safety of the firefighters that when they're coming onto the property in a time of high stress, and when they've got to move quickly, that they can get into their vehicles, get into the station without, you know, fear of falling down or tripping or not being able to see everywhere that they're going. So with that, I turn it over to Lynn and Joe. Um, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Again, Joe Mottafary with JMC, project manager for the project. For the record, I'm just gonna open up the presentation here and share my screen. So, again, so again, as Ms. Wining stated, we're here for the Newcastle Fire District amended site plan, public hearing for the lighting. Sorry about that. There we go. That's better. All right. Thank you very much. I'm usually louder than this. So we have, again, myself and Lynn here, and I also have the chairman of the Newcastle Fire District, Dwight Smith, and the Commissioner Nancy Zesey with me, as well as one of the firefighters back here, Mr. Zesey back here to support the project. I don't think there's any more, but there may be some on the Zoom. The approvals requested are site plan approval. We'll go through the history again as I have before, but at the last meeting in September, there were eight key takeaways from your board. Provide additional detail regarding the proposed lumens for the project. Determine if DPW would permit a light pole within the easement. Move the truck pole for the light, the truck access off Memorial Drive, so that it is not facing the neighbor. Evaluate and reduce the dusk to dawn lighting. Incorporate existing lighting into the analysis. The project will have, there was a comment that the project will have the highest intensity of light in the area, this area of town. Just to look at and address that. What will the site look like, look at from space? Meaning, you know, will it be dark sky compliant? And provide additional information regarding illumination of the pole-mounted and wall-mounted lights in various scenario. So, first comment, you know, total proposed lumens. We provided the analysis to you that showed the total proposed lumens from the originally submitted project to the one that you have in front of you today. I'm not gonna go through the numbers. You have them on the plan in the table, or in your, in the letter, in the tables. But, you know, as we talked about last time, the previously submitted documents did not include the lumens of the existing fixtures that were to remain, so it wasn't necessarily a true analysis that you can compare all of these things to it. But the critical things to consider are what we have up here, you know, the, although multiple fixtures and more lumens may seem more intense, it really does not mean that. If you look at the inverse square law, as the light gets further away, the light gets dimmer. Lighting distribution and optics. Lighting has come a long way with LEDs, et cetera. They can modify the distribution and the optics so that the intensity of the light is not as bad as it used to be with the, with the high-pressure sodium, et cetera, type lights that we had. Location of fixtures. Sometimes if lights are too close together, they might seem more intense. But again, with the lighting distribution and optics, we have some that are close together, but we don't have those hotspots like you might have expected to see. You know, so again, the currently proposed plan takes all of that into account. And although some, some lights may be close, the optics selected on the future, on the fixtures, such that the lighting will not be intense, not be intensely focused with the appearance of a hotspot.
And the hotspot usually on the horizontal surface?
Well, it, it can be typically a lot, it's directly under the fixture. But the optics now with, you know, where they can throw these little LED things, you're getting rid of that. You know, you used to have this bulb.
But I'm asking, if there is a hotspot, it's typically on the horizontal, so if you're off-site looking in, that hotspot's on the horizontal surface, right? It's not hitting you in the face.
Correct. But, but, but with some of the other fixtures that have open lenses or whatever, that hotspot may be hitting you in the face, or may appear to be hitting you in the face. But our application, again, as Lynn stated, we're replacing all of the lights, wall-mounted and pole-mounted on the entire site with dark sky compliant, facing down fixtures. So, you're gonna see the glow at, at the fixture itself, but you're not gonna have that glow that we'll, that we'll look at. So, um, so contact DPW Commissioner regarding the light pole easing. Soon as I left here, I got home, I sent the Commissioner an email that night, just because I wanted to get on this as quickly as possible. His response was, yes, you can put it in the easement, but you have to make sure that it's three feet away from the pipe itself. We said, okay, fine. We looked at where it is on the survey. We placed it in that area. We provided in your pot, in your package, an alternate lighting plan that has it there, and an alternate landscape plan. So, the alternate landscape plan was provided because the pole has to be so far back from the curb itself, closer to the property line, but again, won't be providing, won't be spilling over the property line, that the taller trees to put it back there would be blocking the light from getting to the parking lot.
Joe, on, on that issue of the pole, did you see a ten inch or a ten mile?
I did, yes. So, so we would just have to put in a deeper pole base. I don't see, I don't really see an issue with that.
Okay, good, good.
Um, I was gonna mention that. I, I really don't, you know, a little bit deeper of a pole base, that's fine. So, we would have to, again, locate the pipe actually. And make sure it could fit and whatever, but, you know, just to go through the plans quickly here, this plan is the SP eighteen, or SP eight and eighteen with the, with the fixture here, against the building. So with that, again, either the taller trees along the property line. When, when we put the light pole against the building, we end up with 0.2, 0.1 foot candles on the far side of the parking lot, which is the absolute minimum recommended for a parking area, which is not the best for a place like this, a firehouse, where the firefighters are coming in at, you know, with, with their minds on addressing an emergency situation.
And they would park there? Where they, that's where they would park? They'd come into?
Well, they would park on both sides, but firefighters coming from this direction up King Street are...
Will park there.
They're not gonna go around the parking lot. They, the intention of that lot was to give them parking as close as possible to the truck bay. So, these three lights here, two of them, the two closest to the neighbor, are direct access to the gear room, if I'm saying it correctly, where their jackets and their boots and all that stuff are. So they're gonna be heading to that room to get their gear on and get on the truck. The, the third door closest to King Street goes directly into the truck bay. So maybe you have a firefighter that already has their gear in their truck for whatever reason, or a captain that has to come in and just get people moving, or whatever it is, they're gonna go through that door. But, critical path. We did this plan back in the original approval because we asked the original, this was a part of the discussion during the original approval. Can't you put it up against the property line? Jerry Marshall, the previous DPW Commissioner, said, you're not putting anything in my easement. The new Commissioner said we could. So, this current plan now shows the fixture right here in this location, and you're getting one to two, a little bit more than two foot candles in the, in the parking area. So the average, as I stated in my submission, the recommended average lighting throughout a parking area such as this, or in a parking lot and supermarket, whatever it may be, is between two and four foot candles. So this is within the average of that. And again, no spillage at the property line.
And prior, you said it was point two, right?
Point two on the far end of the parking lot, and now we're getting
Two.
Average of two. We've got a couple areas that are, looks like maybe 1.5 in, in this corner here, but mostly two, 2.3, whatever. It's, it's, 1.3 or 1.5 is certainly better than point two.
All right, gotcha.
So again, the difference between here and here, and looks like something happened to my landscape plan here. I don't know where it went. Let me see if it, it was there a second ago. I, oh, all right. So, so with this plan, you have smaller shrubs. We did select an evergreen shrub in here to go behind this light, so that we could get that lighting coverage on that parking area. We did not get any comments from Mr. Corelli on the, on the selection of that material, but we welcome his thoughts on that as well. So, the next comment was move the light pole from the west side of this truck access drive to Memorial Drive to the east side. So we did that. And it provides adequate lighting through this, this drive aisle and does not impact the neighbor. Next question was evaluate dusk to dawn lighting. Last time we were here, we had, I don't know, eight, nine, 10 dusk to dawn lights, or maybe more. I didn't really quantify, but now we're down to four. Basically, we're proposing to do dusk to dawn lighting at the two man doors on the existing building that are facing Bedford Road and the corner of King Street and Bedford Road. So, and then the other two are on the proposed expansion, one of which is at the mezzanine entry. So if firefighters were to park in this parking lot, coming to a call, they would head to this mezzanine door most likely, because it is the closest access to the main truck bays. And then the second, the fourth one, or the second one on the proposed expansion, it's actually the one that goes, as I said before, to the truck bays. But in consideration of the neighbor's comments, we're putting it furthest away from, from his residence.
And these were all downward shining lights and built into the overhang where you have overhangs, I think, right?
Yeah, so, well, where we have, there's two places we have overhangs, and there are lights like this.
Yep.
So these are, but these are downward facing.
Reset it, and stop it.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're not, they're, they're, they're a curved fixture hanging on the wall, but they are down facing. There is no exposed glass. So I have, I have a slide coming up that kind of shows you what those, what the proposed fixtures are. So, and we're here. So, incorporate existing light fixtures into the lighting analysis. So, we went to the site, I'll show you some slides, some of the information you had in your, in your package. We went to the site and did some analysis of the existing fixtures, of the existing lighting on site, but there's no program or ability to take that exist, those existing information and incorporate it into an analysis without taking all the light fixtures around and trying to figure out what those are and really doing an analysis. You know, a lot of them are streetlights and the, you know, from the, from the street. There's neighbor's lights, whatever. So we did readings that'll help us in our future analysis that you've already asked for when construction is done. But because we couldn't do the existing lights, they're 30, 40 years old, or just didn't have the information to be able to do that, that's why we decided to replace all of the fixtures on the building. So all of the fixtures on the building are these three fixtures. So this fixture on the top here is the one that would be basically above all the, all the doors and in areas that are, you know, a little bit higher, whatever. This one here, which is the round circular one, those would go at each of the truck bay doors on the front. So that was the one I mentioned in my letter that it didn't have dark sky compliance in it. But I spoke to them and they said it, it's not compliant because they didn't submit it for analysis. But it follows the intent and it's, it's...
But it performs a...
It, it performs in that. So I have a letter from them that I can submit to the board tonight that basically states that, as I said, I would have in my submission. I can provide that to the board now if you'd like, or submit it later. And then again, the other lights where we have overhangs are this one here. So, you're basically gonna see for the building-mounted lights, these three fixtures.
And to restate, everything is either 2,700 to 3,000 Kelvin?
They are all 2,700 Kelvin. That's what we designed them at. And by the way, dark sky compliance is anything, you know, if, if you're looking at anything above 3,000, they're not dark sky compliant, so.
So Joe, this is the wall sconces, that one right there?
Yes.
And then these are the two fixtures that would be done in other locations?
Yes.
Got it.
So, yeah, so the...
And it's black, or the black one or the white one?
Um, I believe it would be the black one.
Okay.
So, whatever the color of the roof ceiling is, I would assume that the ones in the ceiling are white like this, because most ceilings are white.
That's probably just that ring, the discussion ring.
But yeah, so these, these ones would only be at the truck bays here, the truck bays here, and the truck bays here. The rest of the wall-mounted lights are these, and you have one canopy here that is access to the, the expansion area here, and then one over here in the front along King Street that will have canopies. That will be the two spots where these fixtures are provided.
And the sconces are the Cs, and then the Es? The Es are the recessed ones?
Nope. The Es are this.
Oh, those are E, okay.
These are E. This is F.
That's F.
And this is, oh, this, and then this is C, D. This is all the rest of the letters.
Got it.
Because we, we ended up, we had so many letters and it just made sense to, that we already had them, we kind of left them. And then there's like C one through eight, because they're all different mounting heights. So we wanted to make sure we understood and you understood, that's where, you know, that, that's the difference. We didn't want to call them all C and you say, well, how high is that one? And how high is that one? So we broke it up in the analysis as shown on the plans to indicate what the heights were.
Joe, is this B two here, is that a pole or is that on the building?
Yes, all of the pole-mounted lights are the B fixtures.
Okay, so that is a pole there, okay.
Yes. Yes. So the pole-mounted lights are not part of this presentation. They were shown in previous submissions. They're not changing. They're the same ones we were previously proposed. We just shifted some locations.
But are you changing the bulbs in those as well?
Those were presented last time as 2,700.
Okay, good, good.
Our last meeting, we were at 2,700. We kept everything at 2,700.
And again, they'll look, just as the one that Greg was pointing out before that you had on the previous screen.
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you.
So, again, incorporate existing light fixtures into the lighting analysis. We went out to the site, did some analysis of the site itself. Essentially, what we found is that there's, there were readings along King Street and Bedford Road here that were, that were not zero. But when you look around, you've got streetlights, off-site lights, et cetera. I mean, it's, it's really hard to tell whether or not a couple of lights over here on, facing Bedford Road from our property are causing or adding to that. But when you look at it, you know, the light amount at the building wall is, you know, a little high, but then in the middle, it's at point four, but then at the property line, it's at point eight, point six, whatever. So something is, something off-site is impacting.
Right. Joe, at that corner, on the other side of Bedford and the other side of King are both commercial buildings, right? There's no residential, there's a, there's a gas station there, and then there's the little retail being across the street, right?
There's a retail. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there's any residential. I'm, you know...
So the only residence we have is to the right-hand side, right?
That's correct. That, that's the only one that I'm aware of.
That's the one we've been working on?
Yes. So, so there's readings, again, at King Street and Bedford Road that are not zero, to be expected. Readings at Memorial Drive of zero. Readings along the Con Ed and the, and the car wash property, they were zero when we turned off the five lights, which, again, we're looking to replace them with these new lights. So we, we analyzed what those lights were doing at the property line currently, even though they're coming on. We went in, we turned them on, took a reading, we turned, oh, I hit too fast there. We turned them on, took a reading, turned them off, took a reading. But when they were off, we were getting readings of zero. So this is the one here with them on. We also did readings along the neighbor's property line and got zero, with the exception of one spot, right in front of their garage, where, where we got a point one.
That because of the pole that you put there?
No.
No? Okay.
No. Because this is existing conditions. This is no lights. We, we made sure that the contractor has lights in the building that they leave on at night for security, safety. We asked them to turn those off. So this is existing conditions, only lights on the existing firehouse and whatever's coming from off-site. So, we had one spot that we had a point one. And I'll just go to the next slide here. This is showing pictures of all the lights on the site, which you can see, they are, they are, you know, not downward-facing lights. They have exposed lenses or whatever. And, you know, all the different lights, some are under canopies, but they're still like spotlight-type lights or whatever. And these are all going to be replaced with those fixtures. So one of these, if I can figure out which one it is. It's, one of these two is actually underneath the canopy for the stairs. That's gonna be replaced with one of those recessed fixtures. The rest of them are all the, the half-circle fixtures that we looked at. And then the neighbor's property here, the garage here, you can see two lights on each side of the, of the building, and then one light that was off at the time of this photo, but one spotlight at the top of, of the roof line there. So, we believe that that point one is actually coming from those lights, because there was no light on our property at the time. So, then we were asked, okay, the firehouse is gonna be the highest intensity lights in this part of the neighborhood. So we took the liberty of going to the gas station and the Walgreens. You have two figures here. The one over here shows when the gas station is open and all their lights are on. And the one here shows when the gas station is closed and the lights are off. They have seven large wall packs with exposed lenses, lenses on the front of the building. I'll show you pictures in a few minutes. That are similar to the ones that we are proposing to take off, that are on the back of the building, facing the car, facing the car wash and the, and the Con Ed spot. So, as far as whether they're the same intensity, I don't think so, maybe not, but they're the same type of fixture. All of the fixtures on this building are consistent with the fixtures that are existing on the firehouse today, is what we've observed. Again, readings at King Street that are, again, results of off-site lighting, I believe. Readings at, and key thing here, largest reading of 34.7 foot candles, right in the middle of the, of the gas pumps. The largest, I think, we have on our proposed plan is eight point something somewhere. You know, the, so that, that's, that's the gas station. So you can see here, we're looking at the lights when the gas station is on. We have the light right in the middle of their, their site for the street light, that's, that has light coming down on the street. And then we have a picture of it with the gas station closed. So the lights are off, but there's still light coming from that street light. Walgreens, again, they have an extensive number of lights on their property, especially along the frontage. Seven gooseneck-style fixtures with exposed bulbs on the frontage of the Walgreens itself. And I think at least six recessed lights right at their door, probably, I didn't really measure, but they're probably six feet on center, maybe, eight feet on center in those little canopies underneath where you walk into the thing. There's additional lights on the front of the rest of the retail pieces that are, again, exposed lights, exposed lenses shining out on the, on the property. On the back of the building here, they have those same style lights that are on the existing firehouse that we are proposing to remove, the five style lights with the exposed lens. You know, on here, highest reading of 29.8. So the lighting at the gas station and the Walgreens is much more intense than what we're proposing as part of our project at this point. These are just some photos of, of the Walgreens. And I have the notes there that I should have taken off from the previous slide, but just gives you a sense of what the Walgreens lights look like. And, uh, let's see, I think this is, this is a sample of the gooseneck with the exposed bulb underneath. All right, so this is just the dark sky again. So that's the pole-mounted light. Those highlighted sections indicate that they are dark sky compliant. So, again, these two are designed in such a way, but not indicated as such because they haven't been submitted, and the ones that go under a ceiling really wouldn't be any of them, so. So, then, then you asked us, look at the different scenarios of the lighting for, you know, if we turn this light off, turn that light off, which we previously submitted, but we updated these in a way that, you know, because we had all of the existing lights replaced. So this fixture shows the same... So this fixture shows the same light on it, lighting on SP eighteen with all of the lights on. Um, that, so that, this is our proposed plan currently. Um, issues here, we have at the Con Ed and Car Wash, there's a little bit of spillage in there. Uh, looks like point one, point two in a couple of areas over to, towards the, the, um, again, the, the Car Wash and the Con Ed parcel. And then we discussed the limited lighting along the far parking from the building on the east side where the firefighters would be coming in during an emergency to park. We, we discussed that already, so that's, that's, um, things to note on that one. This is the alternate lighting plan where we move the light from against the building to, uh, closer to the property line. Since nothing's changed here, we have the same issue of the, a little bit of spillage. But again, in this parking lot, this provides much better lighting for the first responders, much safer, but within the recommended, uh, minimums or recommended, uh, average of two to four foot cans. Um, this one is the, uh, the base design with fixture C eight removed. So on the, on the side of the building facing the driveway to, uh, Bedford Road, there are two lights on the building. One that's mounted low and another that's mounted high. So I said, what if we took that higher light off? And what we found is that the lighting intensity in that scenario is a little less, but it's within, it, it, it's within what we think would be reasonable for the firefight.
So C eight would be replaced or just removed?
We'd just remove it.
Okay.
So, we, we wouldn't have an issue with removing that fixture C eight. The next one is the pole mounted lights only. And essentially, the clouded areas, you can see they're, with just the pole mounted lights, there is not enough lighting at the building walls. And this again is with the alternate design, moving the fixture, uh, away from the building and along the property line uh, next to the residential neighbor.
Can I ask you a question about that, Paul?
Yes.
Just to, where's my laser? Just a quick question. I know you have it, oh, I guess this is one.
This one here.
That one, okay, I'm assuming you located it in the center of the parking spaces just for equal distribution around. I'm just curious, if you were to get it out of the easement, would you have to move it up or down and would it work?
Easement runs parallel. The easement runs parallel with the property line.
And I'm looking at the lines here, it looks like you can get it out of the easement, well, I mean, there's four lines here. So maybe I'm not looking at the proper line, but there's four.
You mean like to drop it in, like here or something?
Yeah, like right into that corner, right there.
I think that's a line too.
Is, is that, I'm just trying to, you know.
There's, there's a small spot there that, but it just wouldn't.
It wouldn't work? I'm trying to get you out of the easement so the next commissioner goes, why'd they put it in the easement, right? I'm trying to avoid that problem.
I get that, I get that, and we did consider that.
Okay.
But the issue is, if we put it up here at the top of the parking lot and put it in at this angle, we're gonna throw a bunch of light this way going to nowhere.
Okay.
And a bunch of light going this way going to nowhere. And if we put it at this end here and face it towards the street, then we're gonna throw na, light at our neighbor.
At the other neighbor, right, okay.
So, I mean, I'd be happy to, I think, consider that and do it, but I, I don't think putting it here in this same configuration is going to give us enough light down here.
Okay, I think, I think you said the, the commissioner gave you some requirements for locating it and you could satisfy those.
I, I believe we could, we'd have to do some field adjustment. So, I mean, again, this is our preference of this design.
Right.
So, if there was an approval where, where this was approved, I would suggest that it be approved subject to the field confirmation. And if it doesn't work with field confirmation, we go to SP eighteen where it's against the building and that's it. So I, it, it's, I get it that it's one or the other, but this is our, our, our.
This is, this is the lesser of the evils.
For us, it's, it's the, it's the better lighting design, I won't say lesser of the evils, cause like you said, there's issues with the easement, right? But it is the better lighting design for the fire district.
With the least amount of impact to the neighbors.
With the least amount of impact to the neighbors.
Gotcha.
Okay.
And also, this easement is actually quite wide for the actual need, the pipe itself is what, eight inches?
It's an eight inch pipe.
So, I mean, we have, uh, a lot of feet on either side, so that should be a lot of flexibility.
It should be, there, it should be flexible, we can't move the pipe. We're actually going to, as, as you may recall from the previous approval, we have to line that pipe. That work is happening tomorrow, so we're not gonna move the pipe.
Don't move the pipe.
So, um, so, we can live with what we pre, the location we previously had approved, but for the firefighter's safety, this is what we prefer.
Okay.
And again, you're, you're, you're not talking about approving a light in a town easement for a private owner, you're talking about approving it for a town sort of entity, right? So it, it's, you know, it's not like you're gonna have issues with even a town, like somebody's trying to sell a property and saying, well, why did you, whatever? You know, why, why did you put it there, I can't, I'm not gonna buy that, you, you gave me a headache, whatever. So, you know, the, it's, it's a little bit of a different scenario than most of the projects. So, uh, let's see, pole mounted lights only. So then we looked at wall mounted lights only. And as with the pole mounted lights not providing sufficient lighting at the building, the wall mounted lights don't provide sufficient lighting in the parking and driving areas. They have to be together. Uh, so this again was the wall mounted fixtures without, without the C eight. Oh, oh, what did I do here? I hit the wrong button. There we go, without the C eight. So that's, again, in here, you know, so that, that lighting was sufficient, but again, not in the parking lot. So, um, okay, so this, it looks like I went to the next slide as well. So this was with, without the C eight and without the G. So the G fixtures are those five that are at the top of the building, the top of the existing building that were recently installed by the fire district that we were again proposing to replace with this new curved fixture. One thing that I realized putting this presentation together is that when you take those out, even those these don't show the, the pole mounted fixtures, the lighting within this area here up against the building to get access to this building is below, at or below the recommended minimum. So that's, that's a safety issue for the firefighters in that area. Um, so, with the, with this, just the C eight removed, it doesn't really impact, it's the same impact as it was before, but insufficient lighting in the parking areas without the pole mounted lights. This just shows the extents, uh, the approximate extents of where the lighting would go for the dusk to dawn. You can see that, you know, the only place that it really gets close to the property line is along Bedford Road here.
And those are those four units.
Those are those four units. So, um, at this point, my next slide will lead to responding to, uh, Sabrina's comments, I can just go through that, or would you like to hold off on that, or?
Well, I think that's gonna be the crux of the conversation. Um, uh, I think we should, uh, I mean, uh, my sentiment is, and I'd like to get it from board, make sure that the sentiment is the same. When you, uh, guys are calling, there's a call, and however that's activated, I don't have a problem with this place looking like a Christmas tree. And everything lit up so that there's safety for the responders. And by the same token, if you have an event at night, whether it's a meeting or maybe some sort of public meeting that's outside of just the fire department, as far as I'm concerned, uh, these lights should be on so that there's safety for people, uh, and of course, the first responders. How you guys activate it, uh, you figure that out, but I, I don't have, I mean, the, do board members have any problem with that? Uh, as far as I'm concerned, what they designed for lighting in the emergency situation with, where firemen and first responders are responding, as far as I'm concerned, all the lights should be on that they've designed and they should be there for the protection of first responders. And if it takes a half hour, an hour, twenty minutes, whatever it takes, that's the way it goes, we got first responders who are responding. So I, I don't have a problem with that, it's, it's, it's the other hours.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's, I think that's really the problem.
So, let me touch on that a little bit.
Or no?
Let me just touch on that a little bit quickly. So, what the plan currently calls for is that the pole mounted lights would be on from dusk to ten PM every day. So, so the wall mounted lights would still be motion, but the, the rest of the lights currently on, on the design, um, would be, um, would be motion sensor. And I appreciate that comment and like to hear what the rest of the board was. I would think that the electrical engineer could probably figure out something that it, that it could be, uh, all of the building mounted lights could be on some sort of a timer similar to that and then be on motion. Uh, I'm not sure, um.
Well, I would hope that you would have some way, when there's a call, when it goes out to the chiefs and there's a call, somehow just activates the lights.
No.
It seems, no?
No. When, when, when there's a call, anybody comes in, every single light is individually activated by motion. Whatever a sensor on the fixture, whatever.
Well, then my-
Is it a sensor on the fixture or is it a sensor in the driveway?
It's, it, there is no sensor in the driveway. These are either sensors on the pole mounted fixtures or sensors mounted on the wall or in the fixture of the fixture itself for the wall mounted fixtures. There is no, like, we, we spoke to-
So you have to walk by it for it to come on?
Correct.
Is there not some way that Bluetooth or some other way that you can activate these lights even before first responders get there or as they're getting there, rather than waiting just for the motion detectors?
Um.
I mean, I think that would be preferable, uh, for first responders to make sure that they're all on as, as we arrive.
And that was part of the reason we had some of those building mounted lights previously, more of those building mounted lights on dusk to dawn. So that we would have some of that.
That's a difference.
Plus, plus the pole mounted lights on from whatever dusk to ten PM.
Right.
But, um, I mean, we're, we're happy to explore that and, and maybe-
I think that, I think that that is key, like the, cause dusk to dawn for a lot of these lights is not necessary in regards to lighting up the site like Christmas from dusk to dawn in this area. I think that if you can solve the turning them on when needed, whether it's, you know, before people arrive to the site or whatever that situation may be, I think that would be very helpful to turning all the lights on when you need them on, as opposed to just having them on from dusk to dawn or until ten PM at night.
I mean, dusk to dawn is fifteen hours in December.
Uh-huh.
Right, it's a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
And I, I, I think that's really the issue for us, I mean-
And I'm not suggesting that all the lights should be on dusk to dawn.
Of course not, but, but what I think what you might hear from us is that you need to have on dusk to dawn those four lights and then demonstrate to us what other ones you need on when there's no one there. Now, we do understand you may need some additional lighting for security, I, you know, just for protection of the site. Um, but not that much, more in my, in my view, but, um, but again, and, and Mr. Wine had made this, uh, statement many times, we're all about the safety of the first responders. So figure out a way to get the lights on all over when you guys are responding, that's, that's critically important. And when you have an event, we don't want people, you know, walking out of the firehouse and tripping and falling and slipping in snow or ice, whatever it might be. Uh, but outside of those times, how can we limit the ambient light to a certain level that is necessary?
Well, outside of those times, it would be these four dusk to dawn lights. We've, we've had a, we've had a meeting with the fire district
Right.
and they agreed to limit it to these four fixtures. If all of the other fixtures are on the building are motion sensor, then if something, someone, whatever, animal, person, car, or whatever it may be passes by that light, it's going to turn on and it's going to stay on for twenty minutes.
I think that would work instead of, I mean, cause I, I misunderstood, I thought you said that the pole lighted, uh, lights would be on dusk to dawn also or to ten o'clock?
No, 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 no.
I thought there was some-
Pole mounted lights are dusk to ten PM. And then switch to motion sensor. Each proposed fixture, whether it's pole mounted or wall mounted, currently in the design is individually controlled. Um, you know, we could consider other options of, you know, if they, you know, if, if, if somebody pulls into this lot, you know, they, all the pole mounted lights turn on, but the other issues we're struggling with here are, our project is under construction, as you know, there are some budget constraints. There were certain controls in the proposal of the budget, and if we add some of these controls, it, it could impact the budget. I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to those questions, I have to talk to the electrical engineer and the contractor and whatever, but, I mean, we, we heard what you said last meeting, cut down the impacts.
Right.
So we said, okay, four lights dusk to dawn, pole mounted lights till ten PM, after ten P, and, and other building mounted lights, motion sensor only, and after ten PM, pole mounted lights, motion sensor only. We are happy to put more on or figure out a way to put more on if there's an event so that we can have that safety. But it's kind of a hard thing, it's kind of an electrical engineering design that, you know, if, if you give us some parameters to work with, maybe we could work with a building inspector on that and, you know, maybe come back to you with the final design if we have to. Cause to, to come back and walk this through would be just, it, it's, it's-
Well, I, I think you guys have done a great job on, in what you, the latest version. I mean, you really reduced the, uh, the, the impacts tremendously. And I think you've given a great deal of thought to it and it's a great analysis. Uh, and I think it really comes down to the issues that Sabrina has raised in her memo and that is which ones really have to be on till ten o'clock? Um, and again, your issue, I guess, their challenge to figure out how these lights all go on at one time when you, when you need them on, yes.
I know I missed last meeting, what's the significance of ten o'clock?
So the, I think it's the code says you can have lights on till eleven.
So it's a town code, that's where-
Well, the town code says eleven.
Okay.
What the district told me was, we probably won't have lights until, you know, we won't have events that go past really ten, if we have a meeting with our fire district or we have a party or some, in general, they won't go past ten. We're happy to go to eleven because I think that's what the code says.
No, I was just wondering where ten came from, that's what-
But we were trying to, you know, it's a little bit of a give and take, we said, okay, we can live with ten o'clock. So that's where that comes from. I, I, I believe that your code says lights get turned off at eleven.
Okay. Does anyone have a problem with lighting the place up when first responders are coming in? I mean, is that an issue?
Nope.
No. I mean, I, I, I think that's, you guys have designed it for that and that's, that's the safety. I think the issue is frankly, the, the ten PM lights and which ones, um, are, are necessary to have on when there's not an event going on. Now, it's-
Well, it sounds like there's four.
Well, no, the, these are dusk to dawn. Yeah, which are over the, the doors, right.
So these are the dusk to dawn.
Which is why I'll go back to- If I understood Joe correctly, at ten o'clock, there's gonna be four lights on outside. However, others can be triggered by motion sensors.
Correct.
And if they are triggered, they stay on for twenty minutes.
Correct.
That's what I've heard so far.
Right, right.
Yes.
And those are all around the rest of the site.
Correct.
So if a dog or a bird or a car or fireman come by, the lights are going on.
Yep. Each individually.
Each individually, yes.
So, so if this is a pole, I drive past this pole, it goes on. The light over here doesn't go on until I get within the circle.
And then the timer starts on that one and the timer starts on that one.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they're not all interconnected because of budgetary reasons.
Yes, which we could look at possibly-
I'm not saying to look at it, I'm just repeating what you said.
If, if the board would give us that flexibility to look at it, it's not a question I can answer right now. We were trying to work within the confines of, you know, what was in our construction budget and whatever, and, and try to appease your concerns. If, if the board would give us that flexibility to- If, if the board would give us that flexibility to work with our electrical engineers and contractors to see if we can fit something within the budget that would allow us to turn the lights on. You know, if, if one's triggered, they all get triggered, then, and, and we work with the building inspector to finalize that. We'd be, we'd be happy with that.
And I don't know, I personally, I don't necessarily know if one gets triggered, all should be triggered. If a guy comes in on one corner of the site, why the lights on the other side of the site have to go on? So.
Yeah, I, I.
I think we, I'm just asking questions.
That's, yeah, that's, and that's fine, and that's, was our thinking as well, but I'm also hearing other comments, so, um, responding, reacting.
My thought on this would be that, but for the four that are gonna be on, uh, dusk to dawn, which are, I think, very appropriate, the balance should be on, um, not on till ten o'clock, but, uh, on only if there's, uh, motion. So nothing goes on unless there's motion, except these four, and then of course, if there's a call or you have a meeting, then everything goes on.
So you're saying the, well.
I, I don't see any need to have poles lit until ten o'clock if nothing's going on there. Uh, that's my point and, and, um, I guess we would be really asking you to demonstrate why they have to be on if you're not there, if no one's there and you have the ac- um, activated lenses on, on everything else. I, I, I just don't, I, I don't get it.
I hear what you're saying. It's not a question I can answer. Dwight, Nancy, is that something you would like to respond to or, or?
Good evening. My name is Dwight Smith.
Can you step up to the mic please? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dwight Smith. I'm chairman of the board. I think it would be very appropriate for us to limit the lights that are on right now till ten o'clock so that they only come on on motion. I don't think we need them on, but we do also have a security issue. So if somebody drives in, we want them to be on motion so that we have that ability to light the road up or the driveway up, especially in two months.
Yes. I, I think that makes great sense.
I think that's something we can work with.
Okay.
So, okay, um.
So I think, uh, the takeaway on that, correct me if I'm wrong on the screen, but it sounds to me that we'll have the four lights on dusk to dawn.
Mm-hmm.
On the building.
On the building.
Yep.
And everything else is on motion detector. There's nothing that will be on necessarily to ten o'clock every night unless there's an activity or, or a call.
Okay.
And then you guys work it out, whatever you need, uh, if there's a call, light it up. And, and, you know, maybe say that.
Okay, so, so if, if we can figure out, if there's nothing going on on the site, everything is motion sensor across the site except for the four fixtures on the building that are dusk to dawn.
Yep. Does that make sense?
If, if, if there is an event
Light it up.
At the buil- at the building, whether it's a fire call or a party or a meeting.
Or a meeting.
Or a boy scout, whatever.
We can, we can light up everything until that's done, up until, you know, let's say it's a meeting
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Or a party or whatever that goes till eleven o'clock because that's what the code says or per code, whatever it means.
You typically, this board has approved in the past an hour after closing for most businesses?
We don't close.
Understandable, and that is usually ten o'clock.
I'm sorry?
That's usually ten o'clock.
So, most businesses close at nine?
Most businesses close at seven.
Okay.
I, I mean, you, you, yeah, so I, you chose ten o'clock. I'd say keep it at ten.
Okay.
If you have an event that goes longer, it goes to eleven, then the lights are on until eleven.
By motion, right? Because people are there, mo- it's an event.
By motion.
Right.
Okay, alright, so, so we find a way to electrically light the Christmas tree in the event of an event, whatever it may be.
I think people naturally are going to be lighting it for you because you're gonna have motion.
And a call. Yeah, be, be moving around. Correct, correct, but, but.
Right? And like, I come back a night a lot and there's typically a police officer sitting in your, in one side, either on either side, right?
Yes.
One side or the other, yep.
So some of these lights probably are gonna go on a lot more when they're even, when there is not even an event. So my recommendation would be to not connect them all because there's people that utilize that, you know, the police sit there. If they show up, they're gonna light up the whole site just for sitting there. And quite frankly, they may wanna hide.
Oh, right, oh, yeah, yeah.
I think great, great point was not to have it all lit up, but just a motion detector that fits the law.
We're, we're, we're fine with that scenario, so.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Four lights on dusk to dawn, everything else motion sensor from.
So the challenge, the challenge now becomes from you to the electrical, uh, people.
Well, no, it, no, it really doesn't because.
Did, did you not say you don't?
No, if it's not interconnected, it should be easy, right?
Yeah, all, all them marketed the other way.
It's fine, we'll just go motion sensor.
Yeah.
And when they're past, they're past and, you know, un- unless, I mean, we just.
Now, the one question I had is, is, Joe, just, just one question.
Okay.
On the twenty minutes, I'm just thinking about the random car or animal that goes by, all, is it gonna really light up everything for twenty minutes? Can you lower the twenty minutes?
It's, it's by fixture.
Right, but if one fixture goes on and another fixture goes on.
So is that gonna be a whole thing?
But it's still, I'm just thinking if, I'm just thinking, it's just gonna light up that fixture for twenty minutes, right? It seems like, twenty minutes seems a long time. I mean, my motion detectors in the house are one minute, right? And then they go off.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not saying one minute for you guys, I'm just asking you to maybe reconsider the twenty minutes because if it's an activity going on, they're gonna be triggered and they're gonna stay on, they're gonna stay on, they're gonna stay on. I'm thinking about the random passerby that triggers a couple of sensors. Then those lights stay lit up for twenty minutes if somebody's just walking by the sidewalk. You follow what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay.
Um.
Maybe it's ten minutes?
You know what kinda equipment you're, you're gonna use to, to, for the motion sensor? Like, do you have something in particular?
I know that some of the fixtures we selected come with motion sensor options.
Yeah.
That's like the, the, the electrical engineers.
Most of those can be, most of those have, have, you have ability to change how long they're be, so.
Yeah, 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 yes, so.
I would say that recommendation be for the shortest time that's, that's reasonable for it, right? If it comes twenty minutes, then it's twenty minutes. If it comes ten minutes and that's reasonable for it to be on for ten minutes. I mean, I hope that if a firefighter is showing up here to a call, they're parked in the truck and driving in less than ten minutes. Um, or else I think we get bigger problems, so.
Agreed, but, you know, and, and.
Right. Whatever, whatever it is, a reason, a reasonable amount, and quite frankly, we're, we can put something in the res- in the approval that if there's an issue, someone comes and complains to us, like, we can work with you guys, maybe there's an area where you don't need it to be twenty minutes.
I, I could see that because the other flip side of the coin is you make it five minutes, right? And you have an event and one person goes out to have a smoke and the, the lights go on for five minutes.
Lights goes dark.
And then another comes out and goes, and, and the neighbors or whatever are going flick, 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 flick.
So, so to Jeff's point, let's find a reasonable time and it may be twenty minutes at the end of the day.
Or, or.
Or maybe varies across the site. Five here, ten there, twenty here, whatever.
That's fine, so.
I'm going here.
We're just asking you to, to think about it.
Yep.
I have no problem with a, some sort of a resolution that says something like he said where, you know, if there's an issue with it, somebody complains, the building inspector can come talk to us and we can work through the issue, whatever it is, but, you know. Okay.
All right.
Great.
Great.
So, do you have some comments?
I, I think we've talked about my comments, but I, but it is a public.
I thought so, yeah. Yeah, I know. And also, did Jeff wanna expand any of his comments? Is he on?
He's on.
Jeff is on, I saw him.
Jeff?
Yeah, one second, sorry to turn my camera. Turn it up. Um, my comments, uh, relatively minor. I, you know, you guys mentioned the one that the, uh, there ain't a, uh, sort of about the foundation conflict between the foundation and the pipe. And, uh, you know, my other comment was just how the, how the sensor gonna work, which I think was thoroughly discussed, so. Other than, no comments.
Okay, great. Are there comments from the public on this? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Can you come on up?
Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Greg Karlak. I live at five seventeen King Street and that's right next to the fire department and right next to the fire station. So I have to say, just initially, uh, I have been trying for, well, I've lived in the house for more than thirty years and I have been trying over that entire period to get the fire department to simply put their lights on motion sensors. Again and again and again. We've, I can't tell you how many times they've had this discussion. So yes, putting everything on a motion sensor is a very, very close solution to this entire mess. So in any event, I do have a couple of issues I wanna discuss related to that. But the first is actually, uh, actually a question. The five lights that we're taking down that on the northwest corner overlooking the main first responders parking lot? Are we still taking those down? Are they, anybody doing by by?
They're being replaced, not taken down.
Those five lights?
They're being replaced.
Okay, so before that happened and before the lights went up, there were three lights. And before that, there were three lights. And all the way back when we first approved this, there were three lights. Okay, so then they put up five and now we're looking at replacing those with five. Is there a reason why we're doing it? I mean, is there, we're not gonna go back to what we had before?
Well, what we went back to before, I, I would say frankly, I leave it to the engineers to tell us, but this actually works because you had three lights up there that were exposed, bulbs exposed, much brighter. And now what we're going to see is five downward shining lights, um, consistent with nightlights. So I would say that the five are gonna be much less than the three that were there.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to, okay, the reason I'm asking, and I do have a reason for this. If you stood underneath those lights looking up the way they are there, uh, you, and it's hard to, it's hard to tell, you would probably be able to see my garage, a portion of the parking lot over at the daycare center. See, if you drew a line, I, I don't have a light, so I can, if you drew a line between this corner and this corner, like this, you'd go through my garage, through the parking lot, up to my neighbor's house, et cetera. And how do I know this? Well, even the other night, I'm a curious guy, I went into their lot and I stood in their parking lot and I could see my shadow in the ground. Isn't that spillover? Am I wrong about this? If I walked up to my neighbor's house and I started making funny things like this, I could make them on the wall. Isn't that spillover?
No, it's not necessarily spillover. Could be glare, could be glare, it's not spillover.
Okay, okay, I mean, I don't know, I'm, you know.
And do you know what, and you, are you sure the source of that light was coming from the building?
Absolutely no question, a hundred percent.
And there weren't struck, there weren't lights in the street?
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
There's, there's no overhead lights in the street at that point?
It's from those lights, those five lights, that's what.
And those lights are coming down though. Those five lights are being removed.
I get it. I'm just asking if we're putting up another five lights, am I gonna, is there any way to check ahead of time to make sure that this window through that, that space, it actually shines on the top of my garage? It should, the upper third of my garage is lit up tonight.
Well, yeah, so what we're also talking about is the only time that those will be on is if someone's walking by and they're activated by a call or because there's a meeting, in which case.
As I said before, putting them on a motion sensor is gonna eliminate a lot of these issues.
In which case, frankly, you may see it, it may be glare, uh, there may be, I, we don't think there's even going to be any spillover, but yeah, you're gonna, you're next to a firehouse and there's gonna be lights.
I got it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm perfectly happy they could turn every light they have on if it's needed because somebody's in the firehouse. But if nobody's in the firehouse and nothing's happening in the firehouse, I'm, quite frankly, I don't see why any lights really need to be on. Whether it's five hours or twelve hours or no, I, why do we need the lights on?
Well, you do need some lights on, on the outside of the building for security. You can't just have a dark sight.
I got you. And if it weren't for those three streetlights directly in front of the premises, which lights up the whole thing like it's daylight and the other lights around the corner by the, by the, what do you call it, splash car wash or whatever, there's plenty of light there.
But those are not going to be on unless there's a call. So all that's gonna be on, you see with those four, um.
No, I was talking about the streetlights.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying that from the applicant, you're just going to see, not so good on lights. Um, this, 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 and this. So you're just gonna see, you know, downward top hats, you know, shining downward in, in, in a little area on a pad, on a, on a, you know, sidewalk pad going into a doorway. So it's, uh, you know, again, there's gonna be zero spillover from that.
Okay.
And, and, and frankly, because they're downward and, and recessed, you're not gonna see glare either.
I have no problem with that. No problem at all. The second issue I had was the pole lights. Um, we've already resolved that. Thank you very much. They're gonna be on sensors. No problem. The only other problem that we have, and it's substantial, I saved it for last, um, is this area here. And thank you for leaving this up for me, I appreciate it. All of these circles are trees, big trees. They're about ten feet across and they will be twenty or thirty feet high. That's my buffer. That's what gives me some security here, that I'm not gonna have to be looking at washing trucks or lights or any of that stuff. I'm gonna have trees there, except I'm not if you put up that pole light six inches from my property line. All those, they all come out, they're all gone. From here to here, all those trees are gone. My buffer's gone, my natural barriers go, they're all gone. They're gonna put up three-foot bushes instead. You can't tell me three-foot bushes are gonna take the place of an eight to ten-foot tree that starts at eight to ten feet and goes twenty to thirty feet in the air. It's just not gonna do it for me. Aside from the fact, can you imagine having a, a, a fifteen-foot steel pole three feet from your, from, from your driveway? I mean, that is the most unsightly thing I've ever seen in my life. Why would you wanna do that? It's crazy.
A lot of people do that with their basketball.
Well, I get, I had a basketball thing set up there also, so I get that. But this is a big cement thing with a big thing on it that a light did over, I don't want that.
Well, um, understood. Um, the other issue I think, uh, so that you understand is we have constraints in terms of what can be planted there because again, it's on that easement.
I got you. And I got solutions for that also.
Okay.
So the bottom line is, if you really wanted to put this thing over there, you know, the light over there, take this space, fill it in, make it an island and put it on the island. I have no problem with that. The other solution is put a small fence around the parking area on this side of the trees and put lights on them. You don't need a fifteen-foot pole six inches from my property line. It's crazy. And it wasn't there before is because we all asked for them to consider moving the poles so they faced the firehouse and didn't face the, the residences. They never would, they didn't think we'd even buy half of that, to tell you the truth. They put this out as an alternative, uh, just because. You asked them to do it and they did it. So thank you very much, I get that. But this doesn't make any sense doing this thing. As a matter of fact, those poles, they're so, they're huge poles. They're fifteen feet off the ground, which is almost as high as the second floor of the firehouse. So why don't we just eliminate the pole completely? Take it out.
Well, the, the reason for that, from what we understand from the applicant, is without the poles, they did a study and the lighting falls below a certain level and that certain level's gotta be met for same issues.
I got it. I got it. But you still have three other fixtures on the wall.
But those fixtures aren't enough to illuminate the forest box in the park.
Change the fixture.
But then it gets much brighter and just more light towards your house.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. It's better than this unsightly pole with a three-foot, you know, concrete block at the bottom of the thing. It's just better.
Does the pole have a three-foot, what, base?
It's two and a half.
Yeah, I think it is thirty inches, something like that.
Two and a half.
Thirty, thirty-inch pole base.
Thirty inches, thirty inches, two and a half feet, two and a half.
And exposed. Yeah, two and a half feet exposed, so.
And, and that pole is not, that light is really not gonna light that space up much anyway, to tell you the truth.
So I just wanna clarify, clarify something on the trees. Dennis, we're not putting big trees there. They're putting hollies that are gonna max out at eight to ten feet?
They don't max out. They should start out as eight to ten.
Or are they gonna be hollies that are eventually gonna go to thirty feet?
No, they're, they're, they're evergreen shrubs.
Okay.
Yeah, they're called.
And they're okay for, those are okay for the easement, right?
Yeah.
So we were never putting trees in the easement. I just wanna clarify something that the neighbor had said, that we had trees.
Yeah, Inkberry, see, Inkberry's a, a native shrub that's evergreen, um, produces berries if it's, if you have.
That's on.
Here's a picture of one, it's called, yeah, these cryptid.
That, that, that's on the alternate plan.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking at dash E B.
Yeah.
Not the alternate plan, what was there before?
Not the alternate plan, what was there before?
So the original approval plan is what, what they're talking about. They were, I'd say, Eastern red cedar, yes. Eastern red cedar, as I recall.
Yeah, there are three, there are three things that go.
Those are those are two types of evergreen trees.
We have a pointer if you'd like.
Okay.
So the, the plan is for red cedars to be in there?
And Japanese. There are three red cedars on each end.
Red cedars grow, so.
Quite tall, yes.
So then.
I know red cedars.
So now you got me, hold on, you got me twisted around, five seventeen King Street. Um, so, you talked about shrubs, so that's why I went to eight feet. But it says alternate there. So now we're looking at the plan that doesn't have alternate. And that one has six, six trees representing two evergreen species. That, that grow to heights, if it works out, taller than fifteen feet for sure. So, now I'm confused what the problem is. That you're gonna have to trim the trees in order for the lights to shine on the parking lot?
So, they're not gonna put them in.
So, let me explain. So, we have the base design that you're looking at there with the landscaping plan, with the with the, with the larger trees. And then, the alternate design that goes with the alternate lighting plan, where we're proposing to put the light pole along the property line. That, so if we put that alternate plan, if we put the light pole in the alternate location, because it's so far back from the curb, because it has to clear the sanitary pipe.
Right.
We have to put in those inkberry shrubs in order for the light to get to the parking areas, otherwise we're.
The trees are gonna block the light.
Block the light.
Correct.
Right, so that would make everybody unhappy. Isn't that what we're going for?
No.
So Joe, the, that would be the inkberries, you would put those immediately around the concrete. But further out, maybe six feet away from the, the post, you can put in your, your red cedar.
They would screen the con, they would screen the concrete base, but no, I'm not making any guarantees they would screen the pole, yeah.
In order to get the, the, we would have to keep clear all of the spaces, otherwise you're gonna block those, those spaces from the light.
So, so. You're gonna block the, put the, you know, the front end of the, of the space. I mean, you know, lighting is not gonna be perfect out there. I mean, we're, we're talking about safety. So you're not gonna be changing spark plugs out there, or you shouldn't be at night, you know, now you don't need the light that bright at that point. So if you're pulling your car in and look, and the front end of your car is a little bit in shade because the light is shaded a little bit by a red cedar. I mean, you know, again, I think you can do a blend here, a couple of inkberries around. I understand it, you, you gotta get the, the light out there.
They cannot, they cannot put the tree, if you're putting the, the light pole in the easement, you can't plant the trees. You, you're limited to shrubs.
Well, my question is, they're putting trees, they're putting trees in easement now.
Right, but they're putting, but what Mr. Karlock is saying is that where that pole is going, there are no longer trees.
Yeah, but I'm saying they have trees going to easement anyway, and I thought we couldn't have put trees in the easement.
So what you're saying?
They have to be farther back from the easement.
Farther back, okay.
It's where, it's where the light is going, because the light is outside of the realm of the pipe. The trees, there, there's a pipe in the ground, and the commissioner said three feet away from the pipe, you can put the light.
You can put light, but I thought we.
And in addition, you can plant trees three feet from the light.
Because typically, we don't put trees in.
Correct, but because of when this first came and the light was on the other side towards the building, we were planting trees to screen the neighbor.
Got it, okay.
And they were okay with the trees, but not okay with, the previous commissioner was okay with trees, but not hardscape like a light.
So we can't do a combination of a hardscape of one light and then away from that one light?
Yes, you can, but that's not, Mr. Karlock is saying that the trees that were to be planted by the light are no longer going to be planted because you're putting a light there.
I understand, so.
Yeah, that's, that's the comment.
This is, this is some distance.
You're gonna order your poles, you're gonna order the pole here for B one?
I don't believe so.
I wonder, I mean, sir, it's twelve and a half feet, you could maybe get a seven and a half foot or a nine foot on top of the two and a half foot, um, support. It looks like you're, you're, I'm just looking at your photometrics here. As the chairman said, it's not gonna be perfectly lit, but you lower the light fixture down, so maybe it's not throwing as much over into this gentleman's house. If not, sir, I think it's, which one do you want? Which side?
I guess the point is, first, it's not throwing it into his house, there is no spillage at the property line.
Starting out looking at a pole.
So, lowering the pole, on that one pole, I guess we could look at it, but I don't know that I'd go any shorter than ten feet on the pole itself. And two and a half feet from the base, but, it, it would just, the, these are, you know, think about how funny it might look for that fixture itself on an eight-foot pole. I mean, and I don't wanna go through and get a different fixture.
I'm not an architect, I'm a developer, I don't care what size, I'm sorry. The, uh.
Go with the original plan.
Yeah, I think it's the original plan.
So if you go to the original plan, which puts trees in, which eliminates the pole, but then he only has point two in that corner of his, right?
Yes.
You only got point two there, and point two is probably not sufficient.
And again, we did that in the original approval because Mr. Morechelle said we couldn't put the light pole there.
I, I know.
Typical design to put the light poles at the property line, shining into the property, which is what we all look for all the time.
Yep.
Which is what we were asked to do at the last meeting, which has done that.
We're just trying to be sensitive to putting the pole right at the edge of the property line.
And, and I get that too, and that was my struggle with it as well, but you asked, we provided.
There's a, there's.
Don't we have zoning laws?
There's the plan, and then there's the alternative. And, and tonight, the board's job is to choose whether or not you wanna implement the plan or the alternative.
And, okay.
I think the ten-foot pole.
So, let me.
On the other side.
And then, and, and it could be fenced there, I mean, the trees could grow.
Well, the alternate is what you asked them to demonstrate last time.
What if, what if we were to incorporate a fence along the property line there? That's, I don't know what the town code permits.
You can do it on the property line.
At what height?
Four feet?
No.
Six feet, I think.
You could put a fence on the property line, but you can't build a house on the property line, and you can't put in a big concrete thing with a fifteen-foot pole on the, at the property line. You just can't do it.
Off the top of my head, I'm not exactly sure what is permitted in the code, um.
Well, I just put my, my garage in, and I had to move it back, and I had to get a variance to move it back three feet off the property line, because it was too close. So, I'm assuming this would apply a, along the entire property line. I had to go five feet in from the back. I mean, you can't just build on the property line. Fence is a different story.
That's a building, that's not a light fixture. Light fixtures are permitted within the buffers.
Concrete slab with a steel thing on the end of it, that's what it is.
I, I understand what it is, but it is permitted within the coast.
So do we have, is it possible, Joe, that we could go with the alternative, but that you could find a pole that is not as tall? So that the combined height is not fifteen feet, but something between ten and twelve, max?
Um. Maybe, so are, are pole bases themselves, the concrete pole bases?
Thirty inches.
Are, are thirty inches round, two and a half feet from the base, and that's because they're, they're at the, well, I guess, you know what, this one?
Plant say two and a half.
Typically, we do two and a half feet for the pole base from the ground because of cars pulling in and hitting them.
Right.
This will be so far back from the property line, from the, from the curb, we could put that two inches or so, so you're not seeing the concrete. Um, so it would just be the pole base. The only issue we might have is if Mr. Karlock comes in and misses his driveway and comes on our property. It's the pole, but we could deal with that, I guess. Or a, a person that owns his house later or whatever. Um, but yes, so we could probably do a twelve-foot pole, incorporate a fence to the maximum height that would be permitted by code, whether it's six feet or eight feet, I don't know. Um.
Hold, hold, I would hold up on the, you could do the fence on the whole property line now, I mean.
No, 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 just within the area where we're proposing the shrubs in the parking.
Just that parking area.
Yeah.
I mean, that's five parking spaces, so you're looking at fifty feet of fence? I mean, fifty feet of fence just randomly sitting there could also look awkward. Let's try to not let the tail waggle off.
Okay.
We spent.
With the pole around.
We spent a lot of hours, ten years ago, going over all this stuff. Architects came in, landscape architects came in, they designed the plan. I had Bill at, at Westchester Tree Life review it. I had, it was all done with a scheme of how to line trees in such a way that I had a natural barrier to lights, to sound, to whatever was going on at the firehouse. And I'm supposed to get a, a, a buffer zone. You're taking half my buffer zone away and sticking a concrete slab in with a piece of steel on it. It's crazy to do that.
Joe, why did you get rid of the five trees?
I'm sorry?
For the one, I'm looking at tree, S P eight B, right, you got, there was five here.
We got rid of all the trees along the curb, so, along the curb, so that we could make sure that we got enough light to the parking areas, because the pole is set back so far, so if I.
Yeah, and then you have some bushes there.
Alright.
Yeah.
I, I would be, I guess.
We can get it back to, closer to his natural buffer. Instead of getting all, all these being little shrubs, or shrubs, they'll grow. Put some, put back some of the trees there, so that you have a very little area where there was, where the, where the pole would be.
I don't want any area where there isn't a, a natural barrier. That was.
If you want a natural barrier, you could put it on your property. Right? See, that's one of the things, you have that right also. It's not all, they have certain rights to do their development. And so, we're trying to mitigate the impact, but it's not necessarily gonna be perfect to satisfy every one of your whims and desires. And in fact, you can respond and help, you could put a fence up yourself on your side if you want. You could put in, uh, trees on your side as well. So it's, and we're trying to work with you, but you know, it's, it's, we're, we're not gonna send it.
Other solutions here.
We're working on those.
I mean, there are, we don't need the pole at all. We can use the fixture spaces on the pole.
Let's, as far as I'm concerned, we do need a pole. We've heard before that the the lighting in that parking lot without the pole is insufficient with just those three canned, uh, lights. So, as far as I'm concerned, that's off the table. We need another light there. Now, the issue is whether it's going to be, the original plan and on the building, and what we heard from you was that was going to be very intrusive to your property, very intrusive to your living. So what we thought was a good solution was trying to put the pole on the other side, shine it toward the building, and get the spillage and, not just spillage, but the glare out of your, out of, off your property. And I think that's what is accomplished. Now, you're complaining about the look of the pole, and, and, and I understand that, that's fine. But I said half jokingly, there are people put poles in their driveways all the time for basketball and other things. It's not the worst thing on earth. Um, and, and, you know, there's a changed situation here. When you were there, you had an animal hospital next year that closed down. It's been a change that you want the property.
I may have a solution. So, kinda going back to something I said before, right? If we, that's, here we go. Oh, there you go. If we keep, well, if we keep the trees on the side where we talked about, and we move the pole back up to the notch up top.
Here?
Yeah.
I just.
Up to the top of the park, where I mentioned before, could you put the pole there to get it out of the easement, and you said, well, it's a problem with getting light? Well, I've heard about, so far I've heard we can eliminate the pole, we don't need the pole, we could do the lights on the building. But if we do the lights on the building, it's too dark. So if there's a compromise, if you take the pole, get it out of the easement, put all the trees there, now the pole is a good fifteen feet from the property line. So it's not on the property line satisfies the neighbor. You keep all the trees in, which satisfies the neighbor. You don't have point two, but you don't have two oh, maybe you have somewhere in the middle, you got one point two with your lighting. One second. Do you follow the same, Joe?
I do, but.
I'm trying to.
My, my concern with that, again, we have to do the analysis, but my concern with that would be the limited lighting.
Gets it away from him.
Oh, yeah.
My concern with that would be the limited lighting then at, at this, as we get further close to these parking spaces closer to the roof.
Say you did illuminated bollards. Say you did two bollards, one on each corner, does that work? A three-foot bollard, you get rid of pole? I mean, I'm probably adding cost, which I'm not trying to do.
You live in Millwood Fire District, right?
Well, I'm thinking Millwood Fire District.
Well, if you look at the Millwood Firehouse, it's not, it's lit up as this one.
No. I'm just trying to figure out a way to, to, to keep the trees, move the pole, and get the light for the first responders. My first, my priority is the life of those guys when they come.
So, the issue with the bollards is, they'd be, no. Part of the issue is, I don't think they, I, I'd have to analyze it, but I don't think they'd provide enough light for the, for the lot, I don't know. But part of the issue is, they'd have to be put right on top of the sanitary pipe, if you want them right at the curb. Nix that idea. So that's, that's the key thing there. We're dealing with sanitary pipe that's almost like, according to the survey, maybe six inches or a foot off the curb towards Mr. Karlock's property.
Off the back park curb.
Off, off the back car, park curb. So that's why we have to put the pole where we're proposing.
Deeper in, to get it out.
Now, if I.
Can you pull up S P eight B? I think that's the easier plan that we're all looking at on our net over here.
Me. No, you know what, S P eight B.
He has a boy, yeah.
So there you go, there's S P.
Oh, it's, I.
Why don't you pull up the alternative first, and just show them the, or the, uh, the original, and then the alternative?
Yeah. Cause, if you, you had five trees there. Is it possible, and it may approach onto your property, sir, a little bit, is that the one that's behind the pole, you offset a little bit towards the east, a little bit on his side?
So, I, I would think that we could, you know, I think the shrubs close to the pole are, are critical to allow the light to get to the spaces. I would think that we could incorporate one or two trees at the corners, and we'd be happy to look at the possibility of putting them, you know, if, if we could curve the trees or whatever onto his property, but the issue with that is, you know, you've got the property line kinda right here, and his driveway is not for, his driveway is only a couple of feet off the property.
But Joe, unless your background was incorrect.
What?
Unless your background was incorrect, on your photometrics, you show the five trees with the pole on that side. I'm looking at.
No, so the photometrics did not consider the land, they, they, that was just the base I gave to the lighting consultant. And they just ran the program. So I think, I, I.
But if they ran the program on that base, then the zero going onto his side is, is assuming that you have these five trees there.
No, it's not.
How, if the.
We gave them the landscaping so that they would know not to put a pole where a tree is.
Okay.
So that, that's what we, that's why we gave them that. Not, not to consider.
Photometrics don't factor in the natural buffer?
No, cause they don't have to, cause you're getting zero anyway. So the natural buffer is going to make it better.
But to, to Jeff's point, is there a way that, you know, you took out five trees? We understand, you know, one, two, three, maybe, you know, the poles could be at number three. And you have two and four, but where you had one and five, put trees in there so that that area that is just going to be filled with, um, um, shrubs is relatively smaller, just around the, the post itself. And if we can get the post smaller, and.
I think we could do something like that, where we put one or two at each corner of, of the lot.
Yeah, pulling in a, as, as, yeah, yeah.
And, and that might be, um, we might be able to do that, and, you know, maybe it's something that we I know the shrubs or the trees will grow, but if we, the plantings will go in after the lighting is in place. We could do something where, you know, we put the tree on the ground and, you know, do a lighting analysis at night before it's in the ground. And see, you know, is it really going to impact it or not? You know, we could work with the building inspector, Mr. Corelli, whatever, to, to place them. And again, we'd be happy to, if Mr. Karlock would be willing to allow us, we'd be happy to shift some of this planting, you know, onto his area of the property as well, if we could, to, to improve that.
There's no room there. There's only this much room. It's, you're right on the border. It's right there. I'm telling you, you're gonna put this pole in my face.
Why why can't we consider changing the wall mounts on the easternmost wall? They're only eight feet off the ground. The trees that they put them in, and they're eight to ten feet off, are gonna block half of it. And two years later, I'm gonna have trees that are four feet higher and the the light won't make a difference. It's a lot neater, it looks better. I mean, the pole right off my driveway is a disaster. You're probably reducing the value of my property by by twenty percent. It's just, it's, I'm happy, I'm not happy with wall mounted units, you know that, I've talked against them the whole time.
I sense that. I sense your unhappiness.
Yeah, okay. I mean, but so I'm willing to compromise. I'm willing to go back to the wall mounted units. You want more light, put more light on them. It's just better for me to do that than to have a pole on my driveway.
So Joe, you took those three fixtures and you kicked up the power to those three. So the far end of the parking area along the tree line wasn't point two, but it was some, wasn't two, but it wasn't point two. Someplace in the middle, is that doable?
Um, so those three fixtures.
Yeah.
Would have to stay where they are. They are at doors and would have to stay where they are. So if we were looking at wall mounted fixtures, again, they would have to be higher on the building and there'd have to be additional fixtures.
Okay, so those three.
And but 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 I I don't know if, I mean.
And or directed out into the parking lot.
The the parking lot itself is only a couple of feet from the property line, ten feet from the property line.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So if I'm gonna get to, there there's no way for me to get to two and or about two at the curb of the parking lot and not have spillage over to Mister Carlock's property. It it's from, with it coming from the building.
But now, well, they would, would your line of, would your line of evergreens there though, as they mature,
Right.
There is.
and let's assume they're maintained, would they act as a barrier to satisfy your neighbor?
They would. They would. So I would be fine with, I think, higher wall mounted fixtures of some kind to provide more light.
Well, you say higher, do you mean higher installation height or more power?
No, higher installation height, thank you. I mean, we're still at twenty seven hundred Kelvin, they're all gonna be that. And, you know, whatever they are, so if we added more, again, it would have to be looked at. If we added more wall mounted fixtures that were higher in elevation on that wall, you know, I guess we could do that, but is that, you know, we could raise the height of the and the intensity of the pole mounted fixture as well.
Right.
That would get us there.
Well, Joe, you mentioned something uh before and we haven't heard from Mister Carlik on this. Would you be willing, I don't know what the total distance is between, uh, say your parking lot curb and his driveway? Is that three feet, is it eight feet, is it?
It's probably, it's like, it it it's ten feet from the curb to the property line as I recall, cause that's the width of the easement.
Okay.
It looks about fifteen feet.
So it's probably about three to five feet tops, probably three.
So the point is to, what Jeff was talking about, putting two extra trees in there, is it not possible that if we work together, that you could put trees behind the pole? Granted, on his property, but he'll get the benefit of that to grow up and cover the, cover that side of the pole?
It is possible.
Right, so I, Mister Carlik, that that's a solution that will.
It is, but it would be, you'd be, leaving the 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 landscape plan the way it is now.
We would not, did you just hear what I said? It would be different. It would be putting the trees back in, but staggering them so that two, maybe three would be odd, shared on your property or on the property line. Again, to give you the benefit of that buffering.
I mean, I guess you could do that, I don't think that's enough.
Well, you you can only do it with your permission, but it it again, it's.
No, I I don't care about, I don't use the property anyway. I I don't use that three foot space or anything, but it's three feet. I mean, what what kind of tree can I put?
Well, it's not just your three, but it's the other, whatever they have.
We we think between the back of the curb and the property line, and the property line to your driveway is thirteen to fifteen feet. In that thirteen to fifteen feet, we're looking to plant two or three additional trees and they may creep onto your three foot area, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
So we have another option.
So you're talking about, you think there's thirteen feet between the curb of my driveway and the.
From the back of the curb of their parking area to your driveway is thirteen feet, approximately thirteen feet from this drawing.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the drawing.
And and, you know, I I would think that we still might need some shrubs close to.
That's fine, fine, yeah.
Yeah, close to the pole.
For the low story, yeah.
But I think you could get, you could put trees behind the pole.
You've only got three feet, so it's 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 kinda.
Well, even if you don't put it directly behind the pole, the red cedars will grow, they spread.
Yeah, yeah.
And and they're going to, they're going to, they're gonna do a better job than fencing.
Yes, we can.
And look nicer.
And look nicer.
We we can. Fencing is not a start, there's the, that, that's the worst.
Yeah, we we agree with you on that.
Again, we can do that. So we have one option of shifting some trees and sharing space of Mister Carlock's property. We have another option of leaving the landscaping as approved and putting in either a taller pole mounted light that's more intense or more wall mounted fixtures on the building that would allow us to get our roughly two foot candles in that parking lot.
And for clarification, all of those are on sensors.
Right, for forget control, forget control for now.
Yeah, yeah.
Just make it short.
I I would like to point out, I would like to point out that the original plan, before you asked them to explore the alternative,
Yes, we both.
there was a pole light in addition to the three wall lights on the other side. Okay, so so there was a pole light there.
Yes.
The the candle foot at the edge of the property was, or at the edge of the parking lot was point two. It was point one at the edge of the property. Okay, so it was very low and maybe not ideal, but it was minimum. Okay?
Correct, correct, and.
It it was the minimum.
Come back to the original.
And 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 that's what, that's what was approved ten years ago.
Correct.
Which, we as designers and the fire district themselves, we're not necessarily happy with that, but we couldn't put a light in the easement because Mister Marshall said we could not.
Understandable. Understandable.
But now the D P W commissioner said we could, so.
I and I think that there are pros and cons with putting a hard scape into an easement.
I don't disagree. I I don't disagree, but again, we're dealing with a town and a town entity, we're not dealing with a private owner.
Yes, and and I think that, but again, for the planning board's information, you know, to, there is a plan with a pole light that it does light the parking lot sufficiently, although not ideally for the applicant. And you have a neighbor and you have, you know, trying to resolve this matter. You know, and and for for the board's information, there are many more lights on the site than there were previously. We've now upgraded all of the lights on the old building and added many more lights that are more focused and dark scar, sky compliant. So there's a lot of lights on this property. Tonight, you've agreed and the applicant has agreed to put the lights all on sensors except for the four lights on the building. So you have a decision to make about this parking lot.
Yep.
Can you tell me where the life pole was on the old plan? Can somebody point that out?
Can you go to that plan?
Is it the red, is it the red one?
No, it it's between, it's it's at the edge of the parking lot just before the corner, the first corner, can you pull up that plan, Joe?
I'm going to it.
Where the handicap ramp is?
Greg, no, no, no.
No.
Is he right?
So.
Right here.
It's, it looks like that.
This is, this is the, so S P eighteen.
Gotcha.
So that is, that is, that that pole mounted fixture is the same pole mounted location as the pole mounted fixture that was approved
Okay.
Right here. Four years ago.
Gotcha. So. And we took it, we moved it to the other side to get more light.
We took it, moved it to the other side of the parking lot.
And then that triggered all the other stuff.
Yep.
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
But.
I mean, if it's up.
You're saying, you're saying put it back on the other side.
Put, go with the original plan. It's not what I like, it's a thousand percent better and will cost me nothing if you just go back to what you approved in the first place.
That worked for you?
We have one of the commissioners who may wanna speak up, Joe, if.
So, uh, again, I, uh, uh.
I'm just.
Yeah, yes.
Excuse me, Mister Car, Nancy Zessi, one of the fire commissioners?
Hello.
We've looked at this a number of times. We've taken into consideration the safety of the firefighters responding either down uh King Street or coming up, okay? Their safety is paramount, alright? To move the pole down to the other end of the parking lot in our eyes is not, is not sufficient. I understand that not everyone is gonna be happy. The district has bent over backward to try to accommodate the neighbor. Um, to my knowledge, he's the only one that has complained. We've done everything, Joe's done everything to try to satisfy some of the complaints. So in our view, speaking from the district, we would like that pole to be where it is now on the plan, in the middle, so the lighting is sufficient for the responders when they come in. And and I'd also like to thank you all for your time, on the alternate plan.
On the, on the alternate plan. Yes.
Okay, and while I'm up here, I just wanna thank you all for the time and effort that you came, to trying to make this plan work. I mean, thank you.
Okay. Any other thoughts, Stuart, Jennifer? No. I, my my thought would be to uh to go with the alternate plan, reduce the height of the pole as Jeff has suggested. And then uh uh figure out a way to get these red cedars in along that entire line, which is very close to what the original um landscape plan was. And that way, I I mean, not immediately, but within a short amount of time, uh, the the starkness of the pole will be covered by these trees and it will give vegetative buffer. And it will accommodate the lighting that the 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 department wants to see and needs. And, you know, I I think the fire, the the commissioners have done a great job of responding and trying to be as responsive as possible. I think all the other things that we talked about earlier, what we accomplished those earlier are terrific and make um um a lot of headway. So I, you know, if if Mister Carlik is agreeable to working with the commissioners to share the and working with Dennis in terms of what legitate, vegetation, vegetation and where to put it, um to to make it work and I think that really will be a good solution.
So you've eliminated the possibility of going back to wall mounted?
I, in my opinion, yes, I I I'm I'm, I like this this alternate that we have before us tonight. That's just me, I'm one person. So that would be my vote. Now, my vote would be to frankly, close the public hearing this evening and then moving forward to give the staff some instructions for uh putting together a a resolution. But there are other members of the board have to speak, should speak.
I'm generally in agreement with what you just said, but so long as the trees can be put around the eastern side of the property to provide similar buffering to what was originally proposed. Given the fire district had originally accepted where the pole was in the original plan, I know it may not be the best. But if we can't shield the resident and there is an alternative that's previously acceptable, that we direct staff to work with with the applicant and the neighbor to get to the best solution.
Okay.
So what do we do now?
Well.
Can I just throw us the board to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, uh, look, you know, we've been through a number of these hearings and just based on what was last said, I mean, obviously, the concern is the safety of the first responders. So if we're talking about having the pole closer, I guess, to the property line, then, I mean, I'm in agreement, I think, with what Bob and Jeff are saying. You know, the instructions would be to figure out a way to reduce the impact to the neighbor while leaving the pole on that side.
Okay, Jennifer, okay.
I'll support that, yeah.
Okay, Greg?
Yeah.
Okay.
If if I may recommend to the board, cause I think that, you know, the the fire department needs to plan accordingly. They're gonna put down electrical wire, all of this.
Yes.
Is it possible to do, to do a closer study of the perimeter of where that parking lot ends, where the easement ends, where the area you need to put in for the light to determine and planting the trees as possible?
Yes.
Cause I think Dennis may wanna look at that closer in closer detail and really understand.
I would think I want to too, which is why I had suggested that at least, you know, we we could look at incorporating some of these trees, but maybe not all, where we would have some shrubs closer to the pole. So, but again, I don't know, I.
Would that satisfy the planning board?
Well, if you are gonna look at, I'm gonna ask you to look at one more thing, okay? Kind of, again, it's looking to split the baby. You've got these five parking spaces right there.
Uh-huh.
Do you think you could get a spot there? And the middle parking space, you turn that into an island and you put your pole there?
I, I don't know.
I'm kinda, you following my memory?
I mean, I know, we we studied.
That way your parking stays the same, right? You get the pole away from the neighbor and you have better illumination now because the pole is more in the center of the lot. You do have a little island popping in your parking area, which could make it difficult for the firemen to get in in a quick havoc way as they're coming to fight a fire, so I wouldn't wanna make anything more difficult for them, but.
If if I was to do something like that, probably what I would do is is a a a small.
Bowlbell.
Uh, well, it would have to be three feet off of the, off of the.
Easement.
Off of the easement or off of the pipe at least.
Maybe even off the back of the curb.
So, so, I I would probably try to make it as small as I could and then stripe the rest.
Usually that's.
I think they need the spot.
Yeah, they need.
Yeah, that, maybe.
It would be, you know, which isn't the best. You know, just stripe it, you know, cross hatch it, but I could look at that, I'm just.
And again, it does, it might, I just, I'm trying to get the, I'm trying to get the simplest thing for you so we get this approved to get you guys building, right?
I very much appreciate that, trust me.
Greg, I think you you just.
Joe, sorry, excuse me, um Dwight, you have a concern about the the snow removal?
Yeah, I was gonna say drainage and stuff, I mean, again, it would have to look at.
Changes a lot of stuff.
It change, I, that's why I'm. That's why, I don't have the full plan.
But. You just jogged my memory.
I did?
Yeah.
Good.
Why don't you, it's like in that fifth spot there, right? You could put a little diamond coming out, right? And then you're gonna have to, you may have a little area where you have two feet wide where there's, where there's no parking spot, but you're three, two on one side, three on the other, that you're able to move, you're able to shift the uh the pole a little bit further into the area while I'm still maintaining five full spots and getting further away from, you understand what I'm saying?
I think I do. I think you're saying put like a little diamond at the end here. But the 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 issue there is, as I said, the pipe, according to the survey, we need to dig it up and see where it really is. The pipe is, according to the plan, a foot or so behind that curb. So to put the pole base in on the other side of the pipe, it still has to be three feet away from the pipe itself, according to uh, the D P W commi, that that's our, that's our difficulty there.
Gotcha.
And and I, I'm going back in my memory.
We're just.
We were trying.
I'm going back in my memory from ten years ago and there was some reason why we didn't put a space closer to here.
The spot there.
I don't remember what it was, I'd have to go back and look at the plans and rack my brain a little bit. But there's drainage, there's landscaping. I mean, we would certainly end up probably losing that shade tree that's in that corner. Maybe not have space for that, I don't know. Uh, but again, I'm I'm happy to, if I can, explore some options with your staff.
That works for me.
To try to get this resolved. And, you know, if if for some reason we can't get this resolved, we're at the original plan. I mean, and 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 the district's gonna have to live with it, unfortunately.
And I just wanted to add, I mean, this is gonna be a field call at the end of the day because, you know, I don't care. You can have an R L A that, you know, is extraordinary, but, you know, until you see what you have, you know, you really can't say, oh yeah, we could plant this and we could plant that, so that's.
So, yes.
It's going to happen no matter what, I just wanted to say that, so.
Yes, so.
It makes it really easy to write a resolution, I know, at the end of the day, but that's kinda how it's gonna unfold.
I I agree totally that the placement of the plant material, if we can get into some at least agreement conceptually that we can make this work, the placement of the plant material would have to be in the field with my office and you present to try to see.
We're gonna select another evergreen that, you know.
Or or, yes, or whatever. Or or yes, or whatever.
All right, stop.
Some 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 adjustment to something.
I would like to request that the board consider closing the public hearing tonight and voting on the alternate as the the preferred uh lighting for the district. And that is um Joe and Dennis started discussing that there be some, you know, workaround between uh the town um and not have to come back to the planning board and also with the input from Mister Carlock to determine the best way to screen the uh the lighting because.
Could we just wait for chairman to come back?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, yeah.
Because we can't do anything without him here.
If I have to say that again?
That's why I wanted to stop you.
I per. Per- personally, I think they were on their way to that position already, I think, closing the public hearing and making what you're suggesting this.
The board's information and red election is just New York State DOT who required the bowl bounds the way that it's drawn tonight against the street. That's what Bob Silas told me.
Okay.
Yep.
So I I would take his word for.
Oh DOT did those bowl bounds.
I I, yeah.
The the.
Okay. Oh, where where the these landscape areas here and here?
He said he believes the DOT required the parking spot, the turning movement so many feet from the edge of pavement in New York State Route one twenty. So he's got a very good memory.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome. I might, you know, I might forget what was.
It's Jennifer's chairman.
It's a gentleman.
But I might, but I remember that that happened, you know, when I was ten years ago, Joe.
Yeah, I see, I told you I remember there was a reason why they were there, I just didn't remember.
By the.
Okay.
So I I I stopped in my tracks. I hope I remember what I said so that we can include the chairman. I would like to request that, as you suggested, the board close the public hearing and make a determination to approve the um the alternate lighting plan, which really provides the best safety protection for the firefighters. And then have um Mister Corelli and Joe and Mister Carlock work on um landscaping as the 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 items are planted and, you know, the 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 base of the pole is in so that they can really measure and see the best way to to put the trees in and the shrubs. Thank you.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts? I I'm uh. Okay, is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um the direction to staff, um I I I support what counsel just articulated. I thought, I think that makes good sense.
Before you make your final vote.
The I'm sorry, the public hearing's closed right now, so we're done. The public, so um.
I'm pleading with you to not do this.
I understand.
Please.
Is the, we have um, what was I saying?
Staff.
Staff directive uh to um draft a resolution approving the alternate plan and the provisions echoing Jeff Jeff's comments to maximize the, you know, vegetative, you know, uh buffering. And to work with, you know, the applicant as well as the neighbor to to maximize that uh buffering, to make the pole as invisible as possible. And shield the whatever lighting, you know, shall we, you know, like. And of course, all the other things that we talked about in terms of the timing and and the uh motion detections detections, et cetera.
Okay.
Is that, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Is the motion for that, that wonderfully worded resolution directed?
Who's determining what maximum buffering is?
So it is, it can't be the.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Who will be determining what maximum buffering is?
Well, I it's, I I guess Dennis. Do you want to put it to Dennis?
Dennis, you're coming.
No, say ho, ho, green giant.
Getting back to my concern that if they can't buffer it, are we then going back to the original, like counsel, and I think Joe said, go back to the original plan if it can't be buffered?
Personally, I don't think we we can do that or should do that. Uh they're in the midst of construction. We, I mean, like it or not, we have to make a decision. We're not gonna make everyone happy, but we have to make a decision. They have to get their construction underway. And I don't think we can be, you know, two weeks from now or a month from now saying, oh, take the pole, now put these up here on on, you know, they've gotta get finished. So they're in the midst, I I think that would be unfair to do. I think uh I I think there's enough parameters, enough space, Greg has identified enough space. And I think there should be enough room in there to really put some good, you know, good red cedars in there and 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 do a good job. I mean, I thought, I was a great catch that you caught about the the bushes and how they were not going to buffer. But um I I don't think that at this point, uh we have to make a decision if we're going with the alternate, we're going with the alternate and then we have to make make that as good as possible.
Okay.
Any thoughts?
I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make your work, Joe.
Thank you.
We will endeavor to do so. Thank you very much. We appreciate the board's time.
Well, Dennis. Yep.
And uh we'll see you next month for the resolution, I guess, or next meeting for the resolution.
Um.
You have to do a motion. You had to do a, did you?
Well, I I I I made a motion and then.
But nobody.
No, we never.
No, it's seconded.
I don't think we actually did a motion.
You had a motion and you had a second. You had Jen motion, Stuart second. So you need.
That was to close the public hearing.
Yeah, we want for.
Okay, and then you need a motion.
Yeah, close public.
Then I, then I made that, yes, I made that.
You made, you made the motion, the resolution.
For the resolution.
Right, and there was a second at that.
And now you have to vote on it.
Second.
All in favor?
Of course.
Alright.
Aye, any opposed?
Bob made the motion.
Right. Alright, make that motion really feel like it's by the way.
Thank you again for your time. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, we move now to our next item. This is also a public hearing, a first time New York Metropolitan Reference and Research Library Agency two forty-nine program room. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plan approval. Sabrina, is this also a um webinar or speech note?
No, not yet.
Because there's no action.
This is just a lot line change before you tonight. It's on for a public hearing.
Yep.
Motion, okay.
Motion, second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good.
Good evening, Mister Chairman. My name is Keith Potenski. I'm the attorney for the applicant. The New York Metropolitan Reference and Research Library Agency, which is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization that provides library services to the metropolitan area. As the Director of Planning mentioned, this is an application for a re-subdivision for a lot line change. The legal description of the property and the deeds did not match the latest filed map from nineteen sixty-nine. And uh this predates the current owner's ownership. Uh but we're here tonight to try to clean up the discrepancy by uh filing, by getting this re-subdivision plat showing the lot line change. That would bring the legal description into conformity with the latest filed plat as we submitted. Um uh so that we can get it approved by this board and then submit it to the county. And then uh the next step will be, as you suggested, to um apply for the special use permit with the zoning board of appeals. And as I understand it, the zoning board will then refer the matter to this board for the wetlands, steep slopes, tree removal, et cetera. So tonight, we're um here to listen to any questions that the board might have. We received several consultant uh memos from the town, of which we're in the process of addressing. Um from what I understand, after speaking with our consultants, there are no comments that are um insurmountable. It's all things that we can address in relatively short order, so the hope would be um to get on the agenda for the next meeting for a draft approved resolution.
Okay, do you have an overhead?
Uh.
These parcels are very confusing to me.
Yes, our consultant, I think Peter Gregory is on the Zoom and he should be able to put the re-subdivision plat up. Pete, are you there? I think you're on mute.
Peter?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I am. And I can uh try and put up the uh, probably of the um.
Okay.
Yep, please.
Okay, can you, here, do you need a pointer?
Uh sure. Thank you.
Okay.
So it's a essentially a two lot subdivision. Pete, please correct me if I'm wrong. Um this is uh the applicant's parcel here, which I think is referred to as parcel X, um the re-subdivision plat. And then this is the neighbor's parcel with the parcel on it, parcel Y over here. Uh the area in question is down here. It's this uh um P-shaped um flag-shaped parcel here. Um the filed map was here, um but the deed line is here. So what we're doing is this plat here would effectively take this crosshatched area, make it part of parcel X and bring the lot line into conformity on the filed plat with the lot line and the deed. So that's change number one.
So the lot line will come straight.
Correct, but the lot line will be straight down here.
It'll be as the, as the dark line is drawn now regardless of the road.
Yeah. Yep.
Right. And then the other change that we're proposing is a land swap. So there are two small parcels of land here and this pizza pie shaped here. And what we're proposing to do is take this parcel and take it from X and give it to Y and take the pizza pie uh shaped parcel and take it from Y and give it to X. And they're both the same size, so there'll be no change to the lot area. And those are the two changes that are shown on there. Pete, did I miss anything?
No, that's correct.
No, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, Sabrina, you have some thoughts coming in?
Sure, so um so it is confusing. Um again, there's a whole history that was submitted with the application that showed a number of filed deeds and.
That was more confusing.
Well, this has a history of deeds being filed to create the three parcels that they're trying to divide into two parcels through this action. And when you file a deed and you don't get subdivision approval and file a subdivision map, it makes it very hard to trace back. Credit to the applicant for going through that task of identifying the um the general shape, following meets and bounds and the deeds to trace that history. Um as the applicant stated, you you know, this is the, we're trying to rectify situation that occurred in the past where applicants have filed deeds and haven't gone through the formal subdivision process. There are three lots ultimately that the applicant is trying to create two lots out of as one action and then they're doing a land swap of equal amounts of land between the final two parcels. Right now, the zoning, the lot line change table that they have submitted doesn't correctly represent three lots going to two lots. And so my comments relate to creating that table. So you understand from eh from lot X, they will be taking half of whatever you called that parcel.
X one or?
Uh yeah, X one, and that Y will also get part of X one. So it's very important for them to show that connection so that we can get final size counts. Because when this map gets filed, it will be affecting the tax rate that each of these property owners will be paying on taxes. Um so I did ask for confirmation as to um some of the differences in lot sizes from what the town's records have versus what the applicant is now showing drawn and just make for certain that those are the actual lot sizes, so we don't end up in this position years from now. Um and uh there were some changes regarding references in the table. Uh parcel Y had the incorrect section lot and block numbers. We had to clean that up. It is a type two action in accordance with State Environmental Quality Review Act, so you have no further environmental um assessment needed. Um and you know, I I did speak with the applicant today. They indicated that the changes that both myself and the deputy town engineer had recommended are very possible to be done within the next, by the next submission deadline. So um you could continue this to your next meeting, the public hearing, and then direct a draft resolution if you so choose.
So we meet again, what, the twenty-first, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, no, no, not October twenty-first, November, uh, fifth.
November fifth, okay.
November fifth, we've already passed the deadline.
Yeah, I would, I would think so, yes.
Yeah, we've already passed that.
Right, okay.
So that's all I have. And Bob may have additional comments.
Good. Okay. Yeah, Bob, you had some thoughts?
Uh yes, good evening, Mister Chairman and members of the board. Thank you so much, guys.
Chairman.
Thank you so much, guys.
Um basically, I have ten comments to try to go through real quick here. Uh number one site easement is shown on the previous file map, one six five seven three, that's on West Side Public Road, uh property which is now fully in merit. I would recommend that to be shown to keep it consistent. It's not shown here, but it should carry the same merit as was shown on one six five seven three. Um and that's number one. Number two, they show the wetlands and the water courses. However, uh it's always been our town's past practice to always show not only the wetlands and the water courses, but the actual hundred and fifty-foot wetlands buffer, because this will be coming back to the planning board as well for wetlands approval. So it's critical the planning board sees the extent of the actual hundred and fifty-foot buffer throughout the whole site. That's number two. Uh number three pertains to the number two, really it's an important note, since this is coming back to the planning board for wetlands approval. It's basically standard notes to put on every subdivision that has wetlands, that's approval on the board, no one can challenge you for obstruction. Activities including land development, activities with a hundred feet regularated buffer, as shown on the subdivision map, all this wetlands, it's granted by the planning board. Critical note. Um number four is really graphics in nature. Uh is the way they have those swap out parcels, they show those like almost like little mini lots. They really gotta be defined more. So really, when you're showing the lots that are gonna be removed, it should always be half tone dashed uh as far as line weight, line type. And then show the heavy border of the actual proposed subdivision boundary line is heavy uh line type. So it's easy to see that on the map. That should be just cleaned up a little bit. Uh number five, we reference documents, the old previous owners. They should show the new control owners for both the new owners, which is the um basically the library, metropolitan library and Peter Bottom. That is not shown on here, critically show that. Uh number six, indicate label the current owners for parcel X and Y as found in the control numbers based on number five. And then number seven, parcel X one X Y, which should be delineated to demarcate the proposed boundary of parcel X and parcel Y with heavy line weight, kind of imagine that. And I would like to see past practice to keep it consistent to be called a re-subdivision hat, keeping in compliance with chapter one thirteen. Uh and the tax lot numbers for all the adjacent property owners should be shown on the flat as well. And the legend for the Westchester County should be only in no jurisdiction. It should not show individual well and water supply. That's only when there's a creation of new lots and new site developments, which this subdivision does not. And those are my, those are my comments for the time, Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Dennis, you had some comments?
Yes, I mean, not that uh Andrew Bond is correct just to show those wetlands, um so I just wanted to go through uh for me just a verification of them. I know I walked the property uh once with Nate Hill and saw uh, you know, wetlands and a lot of things are contour defined. But I knew that from looking at another plan I think that was sent to zoning, that Paul Jennings did the delineation. So I know he typically does a report. It's always good to get a copy of that and I just like to walk the site and just verify the lines that are gonna end up on this filed map. Uh so I haven't had an opportunity to do that, so I was just sort of requesting that through a field perspective. And also, I didn't know if the applicant had gone through since we are in twenty twenty-five. Um you may wanna verify that you have no state jurisdictional wetlands because you can't look at mapping anymore. You have to go through DEC for that JD. So um again, they're only gonna regulate a hundred-foot adjacent area, so if you're outside of that, you don't have to worry about dealing with them. But um only because you put it on the application that they don't. But um only because you put it on the application that they don't regulate it or they don't have jurisdiction, um they're the only ones really that can make that determination now, so that basically summarizes my comments.
Okay, great. Questions, comments from board members? Okay, is there a motion then to continue the public hearing, whether directed to the, oh, are are the members of the public wish to speak on this?
It's due anyway.
I'm just a neighbor who likes the idea and would like to get get start working.
Thank you.
Then I have a question, what is the idea?
So we'll be submitting full plans to the uh to the board, but it's essentially a twenty-five hundred square foot library building and a garage and a small parking area, and it's called the Library Field Project. So during COVID, when we couldn't use the interior of the libraries, these um organizations experimented with taking the libraries outside, and they were doing storytime with kids outside, story walks and things like that. Um there's a strong research component here as well, so um it's, the idea is to encourage members of the public to come onto the property and do their own research projects. Um detail which floor and fauna are available on site, this property is ideally situated because it's next to the town park, um which is great, so there are gonna be interconnected trails, and the idea is to um take the concept of the town park and essentially extend it to this property and add a library.
You said twenty-five hundred, that's correct.
Uh approximately, yeah, Pete, did I get that right?
That's correct, yes.
You you'll hear more about that when they come back to you for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any outdoor lighting?
Do we need a light? Just pole lighting.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Okay, no problem.
Good, um so um we'll continue the public hearing then on, what was it, November five?
Sorry, yep.
November five, and do do we think we'll be close enough that we can, like, ask the staff to prepare a resolution then, or you wanna do it after we close that public hearing? Anticipating when we close it?
Up to the board, I mean, we do.
I think they'll have all the material, right?
It, what, he he said you'd be able to submit it by the deadline, if it's not submitted by the deadline, then there'll be no results.
Okay, so if it is submitted by the the deadline, uh should we direct staff to drop the the resolution? I think so.
Yeah.
Yankee, is there a motion for that?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
So we'll see then?
Thank you, looking forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yo Yankees, thank you.
So, is it score? Six one.
No.
Already, it's just.
Oh. Did they, six one Yankee?
Down, bro. Down.
Ah.
We're in two and home with the first.
But we're not done.
He's a killer.
All right, we have.
We're not done, we're not done.
With the minutes.
We're done.
We have the minutes of uh September sixteen, um any questions, motion, I'm, any questions, changes, um issues on any of the uh minutes?
No.
Nope.
If not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Is there a motion to close the uh meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.